Hello, everybody, and welcome to our special candidate forum edition of A Better Shrewsbury. I'm Sanam Zahir and Bridget Hilton is also here. We will be the co-hosts for this forum. From 3:00 to 4:00 PM, we're going to have all five of our select board candidates. We will start with two pre-written questions, just to get conversation going. Before that, each candidate will give a very short, approximately one-minute bio to tell us a little bit about themselves, and then we're really going to open it up for just some informal dialogue, because we feel like that's the best way to get to know our candidates. For the candidates, before we go around and give you each an opportunity to introduce yourselves, I just wanted to say that we are going to be very strict with the time, so we will just mute if you're going past your time and just move on, because we only have an hour, and there's five candidates, and we really want to have the opportunity to hear from each of you. For any candidate who's not familiar with A Better Shrewsbury, we are a group of Shrewsbury residents that largely focuses on issues pertaining to social justice, so our questions will be centered largely around that. That's the reason this is not open to the public, but we are going to be broadcasting this on Shrewsbury Media Connection to make it available to the public. So, let's go around. We're gonna start in reverse alphabetical order, so let's start with Rajesh. You have one minute, and I'm gonna be timing you.
Wonderful.
Oh, sorry, we're the board member.
Yeah, there's two Rajes here, so.
There are two, yeah. So, yeah, we'll hear from you in an hour.
Sorry for that. Yeah.
Okay, so Raj, if you'd like to take it away, give us a brief introduction about who you are. We can, um, we can get started.
Thank you, Sanam, and thank you for organizing this, Sanam, as well as Bridget. And this is a beautiful opportunity for all of us to discuss and try to make decisions as we go together in this journey. Well, I am Rajesh Uppalapati, as you all know me. I am honored to be running again for the Select Board. I come from a very humble background, where I recognize the value of hard-earned money and how maintaining a healthy standard of living matters to our people with fixed income, low income, and people raising kids with limited resources. We have all faced hardships, and so have I. It breaks my heart to see some systemic issues that we, together in collaboration with town leadership, can solve for, and that's the leadership I intend to provide for our town. Giving back to people comes to me naturally. I've been engaged with the Beale School PTO and Board, several fundraising efforts, and mass donation campaigns. And I bought me, I'm a father of two beautiful girls, and my wife is my pillar of strength, who inspires me to build a great future for our town. With a Harvard's school management degree and engineering background, I have every intention to serve Shrewsbury and make a significant difference for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for staying within one to two minutes. I really appreciate it. It makes things easier. Carlos, you're up.
Thank you, Sanam. Thank you, Bridget, and thank you, A Better Shrewsbury, for putting this together. I'm Carlos Garcia, and I'm running for Select Board in Shrewsbury, because I believe that community should be at the forefront of all of our conversations and decisions. Since 2017, I've had the honor to serve our community and local government first as a town meeting member, and now as the vice chair of the Finance Committee. I was elected to town meeting at the age of 21. Local government impacts us every day, and I believe that my years of municipal experience, my thoughtful approach to the issues, and my personal story will be an asset to me on the Select Board. My mom and I moved to Shrewsbury when I was five years old on a Section 8 housing voucher, because she knew that raising me here would lead to bigger and better opportunities than she had growing up. I'm a proud product of our public schools, and I'm proud to say that I'm the first in my family to graduate from high school. After that, I went on to Assumption College to earn a bachelor's degree in psychology with a minor in political science, and currently I'm an employee of the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office. I'm also proud to share that my mom became a first-time homeowner in Shrewsbury in 2015, then opened her own small business here in town a few short years later. And I highlight these parts of my life, because they're not only my family's personal success stories, they're Shrewsbury's success stories too. And I'm running, because I want to make sure that other individuals and families in this community are able to thrive and succeed as well. And I would be honored to earn your support in May, for the May 2nd annual town election. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Beth Cassavant, you're up.
Thank you. I'm Beth Cassavant, and I would like to thank Sanam and Bridget for organizing this forum on behalf of A Better Shrewsbury. Right now, I feel like I'm doing a whole lot of talking about myself and my qualities as a candidate, but the role and the work that I do as a member of the Select Board is all about you, the residents of Shrewsbury. I'm running to continue leading Shrewsbury in a way that prioritizes community engagement and focuses on improving the quality of life you experience each day. Shrewsbury is the hometown that I chose for my family, and I found ways to contribute since moving here in 2008. I've served as a trustee of the Shrewsbury Public Library. I'm an elected town meeting member for my precinct, and I'm the current president of the Shrewsbury Rotary Club. During my time on the Select Board, I focused on long-term financial planning and advocated for investments in education, reliable municipal services, water infrastructure improvements, mental health resources, including increased funding for Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services, and a mental health clinician on staff with our police department. And I've allocated funding to improving our recreational facilities. I welcome the opportunity to collaborate with residents and to help put your ideas into practice, and I really look forward to participating today in this forum. Thank you.
Thank you for that introduction. Siobhan?
Hi, everyone. Excuse me. Like everyone said, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today and chat with everyone. I love the informal nature of it and getting to communicate, not in text or on Facebook, but actually, you know, somewhat face-to-face. So I think that's a great opportunity, and thank you again. Compared to Shrewsbury standards, I'm very, very new, right? But that's in keeping with why I'm running. I'm running, because I have a pretty different background from a lot of folks who are on the board now, and I think what's, frankly, going to be a complementary skill set to what they already have. And so, you know, thinking about, you know, where I started in education, I was communications major. I was a political science minor, went on to serve 20 years in corporate America. I do look at it that way, because you get a very vigorous training and some of the things that Beth was talking about, right? Long-term financial planning, strategic collaboration, coalition building, really working together to produce actionable results that, you know, you can't please all people all the time. And so that's not even really the goal, right? I think the goal is to involve as many people in the process as possible, so that everyone understands how we got to the end decision, whether they, you know, whether they agree or not. So, most recently, I have been working in local real estate. I transitioned to a second career, so I could have more time for my five sons, who attend, four of whom attend, public schools, one of whom attends ASABET. So I'm very concerned about our VOTAC educational opportunities, as well as just wanting to be, you know, a seat at the table, so to speak, when we're talking about long-term decision-making and what might bring the most revenue and opportunity to our town, as well as sort of cement the quality and reliability of our town services. So, look forward to being part of this, and thank you again.
Thank you. James, you're up.
Good afternoon. Again, like everyone else said, thank you for having us today. Grew up in Shrewsbury, youngest of seven. I went to public schools up to junior high, St. John's, Boston College, graduated from B.C., got licensed in commodities. I was a foreign currency trader for Lehman Brothers. I did not cause them to go out of business. Then ended up trading oils and other commodities. While I was at Boston College, I got my real estate salesperson license. Upon graduating, I, after several years, I received my broker's license for the Commonwealth of Mass. So all through my years, I've been, you know, been dabbling in real estate and construction. Upon leaving Lehman Brothers, I started working for the Egan's of EMC in Carruth Capital. We were a commercial and residential development company, stayed with them for quite a while. So my history and my think, my expertise for the Board is, obviously, we have aging buildings. They need repairs, or we need replacing. I, day-to-day, in my experienced day-to-day work right now, that's what I do all day long. I just negotiate contracts. I work with Shalan actually quite a bit in new construction. On the other side, I've been Parks and Summit Commissioner for 16 years. I've been chair for the past three terms. I brought Cricket to town. We have done the, you know, a lot of different programs. We've tried to expand the programs in town. I think we've done a really nice job. We also obviously manage the cemeteries. We brought the columbariums into town for, you know, for the various, how things are changing in that, in that field. It's just my experience. I mean, I've been in, obviously, I've traded foreign currencies. I'm in construction. I've worked the parks. On another note, I'm actually a police officer for the town of Okham. Up until recently, I've had a canine program, search and rescue bloodhound, looking for autistic and other people like that with dementia. And I have issues with the town as far as, like, no ambulance service. So there's some, I think there are some needs that the town needs to fulfill, and I think I'd be a great candidate for that. So, thank you.
Thank you. And you actually hit the exact two minutes.
I was running out of time.
I was getting ready, I was getting ready to speak up. Thank you all for those introductions. Again, we thought that would just help introduce you, but really, we feel like we're going to get to know you in the middle of the conversation. So the first question I'm gonna ask, I'm not going to assign a person to answer it first. Whoever wants to can do it. So we'll just do it that way. So the first question is gonna be, are you comfortable publicly disagreeing with a majority opinion? If so, can you give a specific example of a time you've done that? And if not, how would you handle a situation like that? So whoever would like to answer that first can go ahead, and then we'll go from there.
I can start off.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Next time, it's all you. Yeah, so that's, you know, one of the things that I focused most on in my corporate career. I was typically either recruited or moved around inside of various organizations to serve as just that, a change agent. So, start this team, build that product, right? And these, most of these were pretty traditional Fortune 500 companies, so there's a lot of resistance to that, right? Change is hard, and it gets people uncomfortable, and they worry about their jobs. And, you know, when they hear things about economic efficiency, everybody kind of clenches up, right? And, you know, that's, that's something that, you know, I dealt with for 20 years. But one that comes to mind is when anyone who has your loans, your student loans with Sally Mae, you know that a while back, they splintered, right, into a consumer banking group that kept the Sally Mae brand, and into Navient, which is a loan servicing, is a loan servicing company, and they're two separate companies now. I worked at Sally Mae at the time and was in the boardroom when those discussions were being made and deciding whether or not do we splinter the company? Can we better serve the customers and our direct niche companies as, you know, separate companies with separate charters? And I was really championing that, because I thought that that we could deliver separate specialty-end products that would really be productive for everyone as separate companies, rather than trying to do everything and be everything to all people. And there was a ton of resistance to that, and so how we solved it was saying, listen, we all want to get to the same end place, right? We want to serve our customers, and we want to stay in business, right? So profit's important. And mainly through data sharing and, you know, strategic coalition building as you get different departmental support and things like that, you know. Clearly, if you have your loan service, you know, you know that's with Navient, and it's not with Sally Mae. So there was a, there was a productive outcome from that. But I think it all comes back to building consensus from a place of what we have in common.
Great. Thank you so much. Who wants to take it next?
I was just gonna say, actually, back in business, when I was with Lehman Brothers, every morning at 6:00 AM, we'd have to meet in the Board, all the salespeople, and talk about, it was company-owned product that they were pushing and wanted us to push on their clients, on our clients, actually. And I wasn't comfortable with it, because obviously, they made a little more money on it, on the spread, because it was their product. And I pushed back on that. I got a lot of, you know, negative feedback on that. But I followed through, and actually, other salespeople went along with me, because we didn't feel good about doing that, you know, and pushing their product on someone just because they made a little more money. I didn't think that was right. And just real quick, because I know there are other candidates who want to speak. It happened, I'm on the cemetery board in Parks, obviously. We did a master plan on Lake Street, which included Shrewsbury youth softball and Little League and soccer, and what their needs were and what they were looking for to fill those needs in the future. We did a master plan. We spent some town money on that. It was all complete. And then recently, it went out that they, somebody else, they wanted to do, the town wanted to do another plan on the same park area. And it's a waste of money, and I pushed back on that. So it's a little example. I mean, we see it in the big picture in corporate world, but we also see it locally in town, where we're trying to cut the waste, because people are, our seniors are on fixed incomes. We don't want their tax rate to go up, or even other citizens in town. That's a problem I have. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, who's next?
Go ahead, Carlos. I think you.
I think I beat you. Sorry, sorry. Yeah, happy, happy to jump in, and, you know, I'm actually proud to be the only town meeting member to publicly post my town meeting voting record. And I've been doing that since 2017 to give constituents more information about who I am and where I stand on various issues in town. And, you know, as a member of the Finance Committee, everything that goes before a town meeting comes to us first. And there have been, you know, instances where I voted against what the Board at the time has voted to approve. So certainly would continue that culture of respectful disagreement to the Board. You know, I think that our disagreements are actually opportunities for us to really actually come together and either, you know, talk about those differences, or work together towards our shared goals. So, I'm proud of that record, and we'll certainly continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think Beth is next, and then we'll come to you, Raj.
Thank you. So I was just thinking back, as I listened to the other candidates' stories about disagreement, and I think back to the work that I've done on different townwide initiatives in starting back with the library, working to get that building project passed and approved by the voters. That took two times. Certainly, a lot of people in opposition to the project, it's too large. We don't need a library. Libraries are obsolete. And standing up and being a voice for the library itself as a resource and an equalizer in our community, and the need for one. I think, again, working to pass the first override in 2014, I was instrumental in that work of organizing groups of citizens and residents to understand why we needed an override. You don't get much more pushback from people than when they hear that you're going to potentially raise their taxes. And so there is a definite need every time you want to do something like that, to build your case and listen to the different perspectives and points of view, and make the case for why the investment is needed. And certainly in 2014, that was the first override to pass after seven previous tries. So there was quite, it seemed like quite an insurmountable task until it was done. I think the same with the 2021 override, and also with the police station and public safety project that was recently passed. It's always about the people that you come across who don't understand or don't agree with the need and having to stand up for something that, you know, you believe is the right direction for the town.
Thank you so much. Raj?
Hi. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to bring out points regarding this. One of the famous examples that all of us know about was the Beale deal. I was totally against the deal. A few of us went to the middle of, I mean, to the town hall protesting the deal, and I was one of the flag bearer there. We had a group that was going on, a WhatsApp group. I tried to bring in everybody, tried to speak the reasons why exactly I'm against it. Of course, the major point was transparency. There was a feedback loop that was sought for, all right? The town had asked for a feedback regarding what they want to see in the center of town. And 80, 80, more than 80% had suggested, we didn't want to see a high-rise building there. And that's exactly what we did with the Beale deal approval. And of course, the people also wanted to see more open space, yeah, I mean, in the middle of town, because, as you know, we don't want to lose the green cover, which I'm a big proponent of. And, and that is the reason why I went against the approval. Of course, there is, I mean, there's a way to do it. I realized afterwards that we had to have more stakeholders. However, that's how I got engaged in this whole, you know, me running for the Select Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the second question. And again, somebody else could, maybe someone other than Siobhan could answer this one, just to mix things up a little bit. Aside from the newly-formed Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee, what work needs to be done to make Shrewsbury a more equitable and inclusive town? And what specific ideas do you have for moving us in that direction? So who wants to go first? And if no one wants to, then Siobhan can go first again.
Okay, I will. I mean, are we sure everybody's good? I get really excited. So just like a puppy, just hit me with newspaper. I'll quiet down, I promise. I'm really glad you mentioned that. So I think ironically, the word diversity can be so polarizing, which is somewhat shocking to me, because I think, you know, everyone perceptions reality, right? And so everyone thinks that means like a different thing to them, and then everybody kind of gets tense and backs in their corners. When I think about diversity, I, I really think that we have to look at things like housing especially, right? You know, how are we maintaining economic viability for people who already live here? Might, who might be vulnerable to fluctuations in pricing, whether it be tax rate or property value or anything else. Excuse me, but also, you know, how do we engage in other communities for things like VOTAC education, right? So we've had some changes there that have been mandated at the state level, you know? And that's, that's something that we have to deal with, right? So how do we respond to that as a community to make sure that we're not just preserving, you know, the socioeconomic diversity that we have now, but that we're really carrying that into the future and making sure that we have a representative town government that reflects all of those voices and a variety of different backgrounds? You know, I tend to lean pretty heavily onto my professional background, because that's what I think I offer the town. But, but trust me when I say that, you know, I've been in a very vulnerable place, you know, in society and had to go through some tough times, which gives you, I think, a lot of empathy for where people are coming from. And I think that that balance of compassion and sort of strategic economic development are ways that we can protect them. Actually, the thing you shared the other day about the, you know, whether it's accessory dwelling units or allowing for, I've been seeing articles about it ever since you posted it, so, you know, the internet's doing its thing. But I think that creative problem-solving that don't just say, put another apartment building, or put another, you know, dense housing block of development where, you know, where there could be a park or something else. You know, we can be creative and still reach out to those people who need it, I think.
Thank you. Who wants to go next?
I would just like to jump in. I agree, totally agree with Siobhan on the, on the trade vocation. There are students in town who don't have access to trade, and it's, you know, not everybody can get into AP classes. Not everybody is following that, you know, route of education. We have a lot of students in town that I'm concerned about who don't have access to trade. Then we're blocked out of ASABET. We're blocked out of Worcester Folk. It's a concern for me. I mean, one of the ideas, and maybe it wasn't feasible, but to turn Beale into a trade school would have been, I've had a couple of people talk to me about that. You know, we just don't have the room right now, but we need to do something about it. I think it's a big concern for the students. On the housing side, a lot of, obviously, we build homes. A lot of times, we're restricted by the zoning. We would like, I mean, honestly, I have lots in town right now, that I would love to build some smaller homes, 1,100 square feet. We're doing it out of state in Arizona. We can't do it here, because I have to build, because of the costs, we can't do it. I would love to be able to do small homes and allow more people back into town. It's crazy that new construction has to be over a million-two right now in town. It's ridiculous. But it's, it's gonna take, it's a community effort. We have to work with the building department, zoning. There need to be some zoning changes, and I think if we want to get, you know, people in, you know, back into the community, our children who can move back into town, and they can afford to live in town, something has to be done about zoning. I just wanted to talk about that, so.
Great. Thank you so much. I think Beth has her hand up. Maybe she can go next.
Sure. Just a couple of points that I wanted to make, just in regard to the vocational education. I also have a daughter who graduated from ASABET, and it was an amazing program for her, and it was the right place for her. And as a Select Board, we all recognize that there is a true loss for our community and our students in not being able to attend that school. But we do have limits within our Board as to what we can do to handle that problem. A lot of that falls within the purview of the school committee. And the Select Board and the school committee have a very great relationship, a strong relationship. And we did go ahead and submit a statement of interest to the Mass School Building Authority for a renovation addition to the high school that would then accommodate some sort of vocational training. Right now, the high school is 98% programmed, and so there isn't room to add even as much as a computer lab to do basic web design or graphic design training. And I think that we also need to understand that there is state law that governs the ability to sort of build our own and replicate what's happening at ASABET, and that the cost associated with that to build a vocational school is $300,000, like, 300, excuse me, $300 million investment. It is not something that I think we are able to take on as a community. I agree that we need to have some creative solutions for the present, but I also think it's very important that we work with our state delegation, Senator Moore and Representative Kane, because this is a problem that isn't going to be able to be solved successfully on the community level, community by community. It's something that we're going to need help with from the state, especially because it was a problem that was created by the state in trying to create equity. They actually made it less equitable for other students. And I don't want to take up additional time, but I have other thoughts around diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. But I will let other candidates jump in, and if there's time, go back. Thank you.
Okay. Carlos or Raj? Who wants to go?
So, so just going back to the original question, I'm excited to see where the DIB committee takes us in the next few years. I'm thankful that we now have this as a permanent committee, because we really need to be thoughtful and deliberate about our efforts to become a more inclusive community and government. As a person, as a person of color myself, you know, this, it's really, it's extremely important to me. Growing up, I didn't go to school with many other kids who looked like me. I didn't have many role models in this community who looked like me, and, you know, I think that that's a shame. So I'm eager to see what recommendations the committee will make that we can implement across the town. I'm glad that our town is using American Rescue Plan Act funds to have translation services for our website, because there is a growing population of our community that English is not their first language. And so even just, you know, minor things like that, that we can do to get information out to people and bring more people into the fold is really important. And, you know, the next thing, I really want to make sure that our government is as reflective of the population as possible. And I don't just mean that culturally or ethnically, but also generation-wise too. You know, I would love to see more young people in local government, for example. And I can just say anecdotally, you know, I've, I've had so many conversations with high schoolers who've reached out to me, who said, you know, Carlos, it's really great to see a young person like you running for Select Board. It really inspires and encourages me to get involved and be active in local government. And I take pride in that, and I think we all should take pride in that, that young people in this community want to be involved. And I think over the years, we've seen more progress in that, but would love us to be more deliberate in that. You know, and just going back to the committee, you know, as a reminder, this committee, or rather, the task force that led to the committee came out of the horrific death of George Floyd. And that was a very hard time for us as a society, as a people. And I'm glad, I'm glad that we turned our pain into purpose, and I hope that this committee is one that can help us move towards our goals for inclusivity and equity in our town. So, thank you.
Thank you. Raj?
Thank you for the question. This is a great question, no doubt about it. We need to be all aware that, and make Shrewsbury, it was an equitable, you know, town. And coming back to that point, to Carlos' point, the town is really not that representative. I mean, the government is not very representative of the people, of the proportions of people, and we plan to change that. Ever I started, ever since I started my run for candidacy last year, a lot of people in my community got encouraged. And that's a good thing. I mean, we went around, we, that we could actually empower them into making decisions and coming out and becoming town meeting members to start with. And like my mom used to say when I was young, all right, education starts at home. You educate a man, he becomes a good individual. But when you educate a woman... But when you educate a woman, you educate a family. So this is something that stuck with me over the years and, you know, we should give equal importance to every, no matter what they are and where they come from. Also, to the point of Assabette, I mean, vocational school I mean, positions that we just lost, I think we need to create one. And we need to do it as a community. We we need to approach all our, all our, all the towns next to us. For example, Westboro, Northboro, I don't know what exactly they have gone through. So I need, we need to understand their pain point. So come up with a vocational school that that serves these boroughs. Let us say, to serves these boroughs and not only vocational in terms of, you know, the ones that we currently have, the programs that we currently have, but also the next generation ones such as the artificial intelligence robotics. These are the programs that are going to stay in the future and stick with students. And these are the programs that people love to see. I think that is where we need to spend more time analyzing and coming up with it with, you know, an option that serves all. Thank you.
Thank you all for all of your responses. It's three thirty two now, and we wanted to leave about half of this for just open dialogue with group members. And we do have a list of questions that were submitted by group members. Not every member needs to answer the questions. If you don't want to, you don't have to. If you want to, you can. And so if it looks like we have a question already, and then we'll just fill the empty space with some questions from this list. So Bridget, you have the admin power here, so.
So the first question is from Shandair Monique.
Hi, thank you.
Hi there, I'm Shandair. I live in Shrewsbury. I've been associated with Shrewsbury since two thousand and eight. I just have a question. I have two small kids that go to the elementary school as as of right now. And I have seen, first with my firsthand experience with the school system, there are multiple issues that I feel that could be fixed with the school system in Shrewsbury. And I would just
Before you answer the question, is this for school committee candidates or for select board candidates?
I guess it's for both because I'm just trying to, you know, drive the conversation forward as to what can be done. And personally, I don't know if everyone sees these. You know, the things I'm going to point out as problems or not. But in general, I'm going to, at the end, leave an open ended question for anyone to answer and pitch in.
Okay, sure. But just a reminder that this is just the select board. The school committee will be at four P M. So if depending on your question, I don't know if you want to ask that at four or if you want to continue and ask it now.
Okay, I'll just be fairly short and then whoever wants to take a stab at it, feel free. So essentially, I've seen there's, you know, the the broader question that I would ask is why cannot school system of Shrewsbury be as good as, for example, the school system of Lexington, Massachusetts? I understand the demographics are different. The motivation that parents have is different. But if a school system can work for underprivileged kids, school system can work for kids with special needs. It should also be able to work for kids who are highly motivated to be really successful in life. So and then, of course, so school system is also a reflection of what the town really is. And the better the school system, the it benefits everyone who owns a house in the town. So there's no reason why the school system should not benefit everyone in the town. Having said that, I've noticed a couple of things. In a town like Shrewsbury in the school system, there is way too much usage and dependence on iPads. If you look at a school system like Lexington, they do not have any iPad usage in elementary schools. They actually teach students how to use computers. So that's one thing I would want to point out. But in general, the bigger question is, what can all of you do to make the school system better?
Mr. Monique, I think that we will save your question for the four o'clock with the with the school committee members. Simply because we want to make sure that the select board candidates have an issue to discuss things within their purview. How does that sound?
Sure, I'm just not going to be around, but
will be reported. It will be reported and we can follow up with your question regarding the com- you know, comparable towns since their school system is as well as the usage of iPads versus computers. And if you want, you can send me a direct message and put it in your own words and we can add it to the list for that session. Okay?
Okay, that's fine. But if I may, just interject here for a second. At the end of the day, select board, selectmen also have an influence in how the school system operates. So don't you think this people who are running for the selectmen should be able to at least make a comment generically on how they would like to see the school system to get better?
If they do have Yeah, they do have oversight over the budget of the schools, but they don't necessarily have oversight over the operations of the schools, the way that you're talking about. So that's why we're feel that that would be a better question to ask during the school board portion of the call. I if they want to make a comment on the schools, they're more than welcome to, but it's it's not totally within their purview.
I'm happy to jump in just quickly to respond to your question in the most, I guess, from a high level answer. The select board is always committed to the quality of schools that we have here and the education that we offer to all students in Shrewsbury. And I think that's most reflective in the way that we have started meeting in what we call two two meetings with two members of the select board, two members of the school committee, the superintendent of schools, the superintendent of finance and operations for the school department and the town manager. And we do that so that we are talking through big issues before they come bigish, become big issues. If you've been here since two thousand and eight, like I have, then you are probably familiar with the way that things were before the two thousand twenty twenty one override, where the town manager would release his budget. The superintendent of schools would release his budget. And then there would be this insurmountable budget gap that we would all wring our hands over and try to figure out how to fill. And oftentimes that would be done by taking as many dollars as possible from our municipal budget and directing it to the school budget to try to fill that gap and sort of stop the the programs and the personnel from being degraded by lack of funding. In two thousand and twenty one, we did come forward as a select board and a school committee with an agreement for the community that would ensure stable funding for our schools and our municipal departments for at least four years. And that was achieved by passing the nine and a half million dollar override in two thousand and twenty one. I'm always happy to answer more questions about that, but I think that, you know, Bridget is correct when she says that the select board does allocate funding to the schools. But once that funding is given to the school department, it is up to the school department and the school committee on how that is spent.
Thank you, Beth. We would like to keep the topics based on things that are within the purview of the select board, as we said.
Just to shift back to topics, I can ask, I'm going to ask one of the questions that were submitted by previous group members. And then if anyone has any questions, just raise your hand and then we'll call on you in order. And so one of the questions that was submitted was, how would you engage the public in local decision making processes? Do you think our current model is working? And whoever would like to go first can just jump right in. And again, if anyone has any questions, just raise your hand and we will, we will call on you in order.
Just like to jump in, you know, we're we're right now currently engaged in the cemetery expansion up in Prospect Park, which is a little bit of a heated discussion, not as heated as the Beale, as Beth can attest to that. I would just like to say, we we do a lot as a town, as town government, to put it out to the public for public input. But we don't necessarily are always get the feedback that we hope for. We do open meetings at the library. We've done that several times for expansion of the parks and the cemetery. And we just get a handful of people who typically are always the same people are out there. We'd love to, you know, get more people involved in the decision making and helping us, you know, guide us in the way that the community wants to be driven. But we unfortunately just don't get the, we don't get the people who who attend these open meetings to help us. So we rely a lot on our own, you know, feedback and what other communities are doing. Would love to have more community engagement. And we've tried with, you know, through websites, through mailings, through letters to the schools. I mean, if anyone has some better ideas, where, you know, we're hoping for them, but we try. So that is the problem we're trying to fix. So.
So I'll I'll jump in just a little bit there. So my twenty years were done in in marketing and sales, right? And a lot like what Jim and I do now, when we're when we're selling homes or developments. It's it's marketing. And so you get the message out there and then you try to close the feedback loop, which is, I think, what you're describing. And we've all heard it, right? You know, we put out a survey to thirty nine thousand people and three hundred some odd responded, right? And then we all scratch our heads and say, well, that's not representative of the community. So to answer the question, I don't think it's working and I don't think it's for lack of effort. As Jim said, I know it's not just Parks and Rec. I know that every department in town has had the same struggle with open meeting attendance and reading the materials that are sent out. And I think it's because when I think about, you know, in marketing, we always talk about channels. So what are the channels of distribution for our message? And I think that historically and very naturally, our channels have been very one way directed, right? Here's the narrative, here's the question, here's the whatever. A newsletter is one way, a website is great for self service, but it's also one way. And I think that closing that feedback loop involves engaging people in a bit of a different way. And really gets to get back to, again, to the heart of why I'm I'm running, right? Because I think I offer that different lens of, it doesn't have to be a flyer, a newsletter, you know? I gotta be honest, no, no one's reading newsletters anymore. You know, I shouldn't say no one, but we're out of a town of thirty nine thousand people, I would venture to say the majority of them don't have the time, energy, whatever to to sift, you know, right through through a newsletter. So I think going to the some of the ways where, you know, in my in my charitable work or ways that we engage the community for things that are, you know, raising money, raising donations, raising things like that, we get a really great response. And so I think that if we tweak our messaging and we invite the community to engage with us in different ways that both leverage technology and are in person that we might get. I mean, even if we double it, we're talking about six or seven hundred people, right? So it's a big lift and I don't want to, I don't want to minimize that, the fact that it is a big lift. But I think if we think a little bit outside of the box as far as how we're trying to reach people and how, what channels we give them them to reach back out to us that we could, we could drive a lot more engagement than we than we have now.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to answer that question?
I do, yes. And I certainly agree with what's what's been said, you know, it's a serving on the finance committee, it is. It is a bit upsetting to see our public hearings be you know, mostly attended either by the same people or by no one at all. And you know, I think, I mean, the finance committee just went through our budget hearings recently, which did have a fair number of attendance, but still the same number of people. We're currently going through the warrant articles and still the same same folks. And I really want us to engage with, I want more people to engage with our local government and be participants earlier on so that we don't get upset about the decisions that are made at the end. Another thing that I think about is is town meeting, you know, I think that town meeting is a great avenue for folks to really get more actively involved and and have a first, you know, be directly involved with decision making in the town. I know I'm an outlier here, but I I attended my very first town meeting as a senior in high school and I I fell in love with the process. And you know, shortly after that, ran for town meeting myself. But I really think that we really need to educate the public more about what does it mean to be a town meeting member? How, what's the process? What are the steps to? You know, in being a town meeting, or what's the time commitment? Actually, select, I'm I'm happy that select board member Teresa Flynn is here because she recently held a forum about this at the senior center. And I would have loved to have more people there, but what I was encouraged to see was that there were a fair number of people who were not ever town meeting members before who went there for the first time to listen and learn about what it means to be an active participant in our local government. And I was encouraged to learn that, I think, the day or two after I think it was like eight people pulled papers to run for town meeting. And, you know, that may sound like a small number, but I think that that's great because those eight people have networks of their own. They talked to their friends, they talked to their neighbors about the decisions that are being made at town hall and a town meeting. And I really think that we should, we should start activating our town meeting members too, because each all two hundred forty of them are leaders in their own right. They all have networks. So I think that we should be thoughtful about engaging them and and encouraging them to also reach out to their people.
Thank you. Do any of the other candidates want to tackle this question?
Sure. Hey, thank you. Thank you for the question. Well, you know, transparency is all about open and honest communication and being open and pragmatic and having an open feedback loop is very important. All right. So this is what I felt, I mean, in my opinion, what exactly is happening right now. We send it, we send a feedback form, all right, we we sought feedback from the town and whenever there's a lot of feedback that comes, comes to the town. What exactly are we doing with it? I think, I think that's where we need to, I mean, you know, then really change the communication process on what exactly we're doing with the feedback and how we are using this feedback in in the, I mean, the loopback that happens, right? How we're using to drive our communication forward and our decisions forward in a way that that is in tune with the with the feedback given. That is very important. I think once we are very clear of that, I think we will be able to drive more more people to to attend or to take service. So I I've talked to different people across town about how we how we could improve on this communication, right? From my own community and others as well. And this is the conclusion from that. They they feel like they're not being listened to. I I don't know where exactly we're failing. We definitely want to take this up at a town level and and bring in more more people into our our system. I mean, with open communication. Thank you.
I could just jump in for just a couple of minutes. I definitely appreciate efforts that have been made to improve communication and engagement with residents. I will tell you that six years ago, that was a driving force in why I chose to run for the select board. Because standing up in front of the select board and advocating for something that I thought was important, whether it be a building an override to invest in education and in public municipal services. It was always very intimidating and I didn't want it to feel that way for other people. I ran to be someone who was approachable, someone who you felt comfortable reaching out to, picking up the phone, talking to in the grocery store, that sort of thing. I think that we've made great strides and I don't want that to be lost within the din of the Beale project. I think it's important to recall that there is was a lot of work done around the strategic plan, a lot of engagement with residents. To be exact, over three thousand three hundred and eighty pieces of feedback were received in creating the strategic plan for the town. And what that plan lays out is our goal of being resident focused in everything that we do to be the best local government that we can be. And that is the purpose of the select board and it's the purpose of every staff member who works for the town from the town manager all the way through every department that we have. That's not to say that there isn't an opportunity to improve. There's always an opportunity to improve. And I think that by listening to what the residents have to say, even if you're not always going to agree and do what a resident would like to see you do, because that's not possible. We get a little bit better every time we have the conversations around, oh, here's an idea for how to reach out to someone or here's an idea for how to improve engagement with residents. I'll just give a quick example. There is a climate action group in town and they were very interested in possibly bringing forth a petition article so that the town would would put funding aside for a climate action plan. And they reached out to myself and select board member Samia. And we said, you know, before you go down the road of a petition article, why don't we sit down and talk about it? And what ended up happening was this group of interested residents plus two members of the select board. We brought in town staff, we sat together, we kind of worked through a timeline, brought it back to the rest of the board. And their article appeared on the town meeting warrant, and now we are in the process of developing a climate action plan. And it's very much resident focused. There are several opportunities for residents to participate in forming that plan. I know that we mentioned the zoning changes. I think that's another great opportunity to sit down with two members of the select board, again, open meeting law, you can't sit down with a quorum, but two members of the select board and members of town staff, whether it's the planner or the manager. And let's talk about, you know, how to adjust our zoning bylaws so that we can allow accessory dwelling units by right instead of by special permit. That's the way that we start to hear more voices and have more people feel that they're included is by drawing them into the process, things that they're interested in and getting them to see how local government can work for them and that it is accessible. And that's how you make it accessible to more people. So thank you.
Thank you. So we only have ten more minutes left and we have two members that are submitting questions. So we're going to have both Carissa and Ashley share their questions and then have the candidates respond. And these will likely be our final questions for the event. Since there are still a lot of questions people have. Um, since there are still a lot of questions people have, maybe they can just post them in the group or reach out to you individually to get those answers. We're sorry, we would have loved to have these be two, three-hour forums so we could really dive in, but, um, it's a lot of candidates this year, which is exciting. Um, so Carissa and Ashley, maybe, um, Ashley had her hand, she was trying to put her hand up, but she couldn't. So she sent a private message. Maybe Ashley, you can ask your question first and then Carissa can ask and then the candidates can have a chance to respond.
Awesome, thanks. Um, so my question's about accessibility. I know last year the town did a ADA self-evaluation and transition plan, um, to assess the level of compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act in the town facilities and programs, uh, which got us a five hundred-ish page document with an enormous amount of accessibility issues um, in buildings, neighborhood parks, et cetera. Uh, so I, my question is, uh, whether people feel that improving accessibility and compliance with ADA should be a priority for the town? And if so, how you would envision moving forward with addressing those needs?
I can actually speak, uh, in regards to that because I'm on, uh, two committees. Obviously, I'm the chair of the Parks and Cemetery. And we are constantly looking about what we can do to upgrade our accessibility, um, to the different, uh, pieces of the parks that we have all over town. And I think we've done a, a good job. I don't think we're a hundred percent there. Obviously, we're not. But we, just so you know, we are, we're definitely working on that. We talk about it pretty much at every meeting. The other thing, I'm on the board for, uh, road acceptance and sidewalks. There's some state grants out there and we're actually talking about sidewalks down on South Quinsig uh, and North Quinsig and about getting sidewalks with, you know, accessibility ramps and all that. So people do have access all over town because everybody should have access to everything. Uh, we're in the process of getting a, a nice, um, facility down at Jordan Pond, a fishing pier that Mo actually, uh, was instrumental in bringing it to our board. Uh, and that's going forward. And I know that unfortunately with COVID, everything's delayed. We were hoping that was going to be in place last year. But it looks like we're going, that is, the process is moving forward through engineering. The Commonwealth will be providing that shortly. And, and so people have access to go fishing down at Jordan Pond who have disabilities. So I'm a big proponent of, you know, uh, accessibility for, for everyone in town. So.
Ashley, thank you for your question. Um, I too saw that study that was recently done or the evaluation that was really recently done. And it was just really eye-opening to see all the challenges that we face here in town in terms of our ADA compliance and full-heartedly, one hundred percent with you that we need to make ADA improvements across this town. So that, you know, all of our residents can feel welcomed and, uh, feel included. Um, and as an able-bodied person myself, you know, a lot of it was, were things that I didn't consider. And I think that um, the evaluation, you know, did its purpose and, um, really opened our eyes to, um, things that we might overlook. You know, day to day, you know, one of the things, and it, it may seem minor, but, um, like park benches, for example, having a space next to the physical bench to park a wheelchair. Um, it's not something that many people think about, you know, you just think to, you know, you sit on the, the park bench and that's it. And there's grass next all around you. But, um, having that space next to you i- is really something that can help people feel welcomed and allow them to enjoy the space next to their loved ones, next to their friends. And, you know, I, I know that some American Rescue Plan Act funds, uh, were used to, um, improve our ADA compliance at some of our parks and some of our public buildings. But certainly we, we do have some funds left over and I have advocated for, um, more resources to be spent to make ADA improvements. So thank you for your question.
I'm actually sorry, I'm going to jump in here and ask Carissa to also ask her question, just because I'm trying to be mindful of time.
I actually think Ashley's question is so important, so I would love to stay on that and just hear from all the candidates because yeah, I'm totally on board with this question, so I want to hear.
Why don't you, why don't you DM me your question and then we'll post all of the questions in the group? Okay, so who wants to go next on this? We've heard from two, I believe.
I can go next. So I actually, um, I love what Carlos, Carlos was just saying, sorry, um, about, you know, taking in the feedback about what you don't know, right? So there was, I knew a lot less about ADA compliance before I transitioned to a career in real estate. Now I know a lot more about it, um, and have worked with a lot of clients, you know, who have individual needs that, um, I, I wouldn't have necessarily flagged otherwise. So I would just actually echo the sentiment that we really do want to continue to um, have conversations with people who have the firsthand knowledge of, of what the needs are. Um, and then take that direction from them. I, I'm certainly not the expert in that space, right? But we have a lot of talent in our town, not just with regard to this, but really across the board that we could be leveraging. Um, and as we said earlier, engaging them directly so that they can feed their expertise back into the town and make improvements across, you know, really every sector, including ADA compliance. So I think it's a great question and one that, you know, as part of fundamental town services, we, we need to make sure that as Jim said, you know, we're really serving every sector of the community. So it's critically important. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, um, Carissa. Uh, is it okay to go next?
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, all right. Um, so, um, I understand there has been, uh, some improvements in the recent past and we are becoming more and more ADA compliant as we talk about this at all our buildings. I think, um, I've seen that at, uh, Beal, there was, um, I mean, um, different opportunities there and we took advantage of them being at Meek and New School. And, and, and getting the funding was, I think, was very important as well. So we were, uh, big proponents of that. Ho- however, um, I would like to see the same at every school and every campus, every common campus that we go to. I see some improvement in terms of, uh, our, our town hall as well, definitely. Uh, and, uh, we, we could do better and more. Um, I feel this is very important for us to focus on. Thank you.
So I'll jump in. Uh, so this is a D E I B issue, a hundred percent at its core. It's, um, making sure that people with accessibility issues have the same opportunity to enjoy our community as someone who does not have accessibility issues. Uh, and I think, Ashley, it's, it's a really great, great question. The study that was done is only the first step, but it is a step that will inform decisions going forward as to how we are able to allocate funding to really start addressing, um, many of the accessibility needs that we have identified in that study. I can also tell you from speaking with public buildings that a lot of work is underway. Uh, and we will have, um, information on that available on the website for people to take a look and read the study if they'd like to. Um, and then always happy to find out more about exactly which projects are being addressed. But again, it is going to come down to, um, prioritizing and then finding the funding to be able to allocate to get, you know, to improve accessibility. I will say one thing that, uh, I recently was really surprised to learn is that in the Edgemere Crossing Apartments, because they are three floors only, they don't have to have elevators. Um, and someone asked me about that and I went to the town manager and I said, how could that be? Like, how could you not require an elevator? And there's nothing that we can do as a town because it is a private building. So I was really surprised by that and it kind of got the wheels turning in my head as to what can be done, I guess, at the state level maybe to change that requirement. Do we need to work with the building inspector? You know, who do we need to bring together? Because for me, you know, sure, maybe you move into a third floor apartment and you're able-bodied, but you could very easily break a leg and not be able to get into your house. Um, so I think about that as something that really needs to be changed. And I think that's not something that was identified in the report, but just another way that within our community, we are not accessible, um, to all.
All right. Thank you all. Um, thank you to all the select board candidates for coming to this forum. We, again, we wish this could have been a two-hour forum so we could really flesh out some of these topics. Um, what I'm going to do after this session is send out the recording and um, all of your contact information to everybody who registered for this event. Um, the other thing I'm going to do is that we have several questions that we didn't get the, to answer. Um, I'll post them in the group and I'll tag all of you. And if you have time or you feel like it, you're welcome to go and individually respond to some of them. And if not, no worries. It'll just be, we're just very casual. We're very casual people. Um, so thank you again for coming. Um, to everybody else, we're going to have our school committee, forum in about one minute. Um, we're going to stop the recording briefly, restart it because it's going to be two separate episodes. Um, so thank you all for coming and we'll see you in thirty seconds.